Good evening, executive colleagues, councillors, officers and members of the public. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Waverley Executive. Before we start, if I may just go through a couple of housekeeping points. We are not expecting a fire alarm tonight, so if you hear the fire alarm sound then it is for real. And if I can remind you, there are two fire exits there and to my right, and we assemble outside Waitrose where the appropriate register can be taken and you can then leave once you're all safely accounted for. Right, if we move to the first item on the agenda, which is the minutes, and that's to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 6th of February 2018 and of the special meeting held on the 20th of February, and those have been laid on the table for half an hour prior to this meeting. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. I will sign those at the end of this meeting. Do we have any apologies for absence? It doesn't look as if we do. No? Thank you. Any declarations of interest? Mr Taylor?
None received in advance, Leader.
Okay, thank you. And if I may, I've been slightly remiss, can I also take this opportunity to welcome Ms Cameron, who has taken over the interim role as Democratic Services Manager from Mrs McQuillan, and she's up here tonight. So, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Right, any questions from members of the public? Mrs Cameron?
None this evening, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to item five, and I believe we have some speakers under item five. Councillor Band, I think, under item five, which is actually Local Plan Part Two, you wanted to just make a point of clarity in relation to Local Plan Part One.
If you'd like me to do that now, Leader, I'd be happy to do it. Okay, well, in the past, there appears to have been some confusion, the position of the Surrey Hills ONAB Board in relation to the challenge to Part One of our local plan. And I just wanted to yet again clear it up. I mean, I quote directly from the statement made by the Chairman of the Surrey Hills ONAB Board, and quote, "The Board has no role whatsoever in publicly challenging the policies of its six constituent councils." And that's a policy which was adopted by the Board and which I, as Waverley's representative on the Board, fully endorse and supported. Sure, for sure, queries have been raised by various people as to what Waverley have been doing, and I have robustly defended Waverley's approach to its local plan. Now, my robust approach has been minuted and has been fully supported by the Chairman and also by the representatives of the other constituent councils on the Board. So I think for the record, once again, the ONAB Board has no role whatsoever in publicly challenging the policies of its constituent councils, and I hope, Leader, that fully clarifies the situation. Thank you.
Councillor Band, thank you very much for making that statement. There has been quite a lot of misinformation, as you say, and speculation, and I know a number of questions that some of us have received here about that and the position. So many thanks to you for taking the time to clarify the stance and the position of the Board, much appreciated. I now move to the next speaker, who is Councillor Knowles. Councillor Knowles.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm aware that this item is to approve the consultation, however, I would like to raise some major safety concerns I have based on the papers. Both are in my ward, but one has much wider ramifications. Firstly, the area referred to as key site Hazelmead, DS07, this suggests the loss of two car parks, including the largest, leaving the town with virtually no off-street parking, doubtless destroying any retail that does remain. The weasel words regarding finding alternative parking in walking distance is utter nonsense, there isn't any. We've been trying to find some for years. However, that is not my main concern today. My concern is the map clearly shows Hazelmead Fire Station as part of the development site. Without a named site within the town for a fire station, this is, in my opinion, reckless and a dangerous proposal. In recent years, Surrey County Council floated the idea of closing both Hazelmead and Gollumming Fire Stations and replacing them with the one at Milford, giving easy access to the A3. I saw those papers. This would leave Hazelmead eight miles away from the fire station along narrow and windy roads, and that is not acceptable. I remember a time when Hazelmead had two fire stations, one in West Street and the other in Sturt Avenue, a West Sussex fire service station, and when that closed, the tender moved to Hazelmead, and that is why Hazelmead responds well into West Sussex, places like Fernhurst, some 15 miles away from Milford. These proposals are an open invitation to Surrey to resurrect closure plans and put the area at risk. I'm sure officers will suggest Hazelmead could be covered by Hampshire Fire Service at Grayshaw. In that case, perhaps we should move the whole area into East Hampshire. Hazelmead had an ambulance station which now houses eight, is the site of eight houses, with the lone ambulance sitting forlornly on the hospital grounds, and members of the executive know how long ambulance response times are in the area. The police station is closed, indeed, there is no police station in Waverley, not even a counter anymore. Plans that put emergency response at risk are not acceptable, and I would like to see the fire station removed from the plan. Secondly, I'm concerned that 38 Petworth Road is in the papers, DS14. Within the last month, the planning inspector has dismissed an appeal to develop this site, and amongst the many reasons given are road safety, and I quote from the inspector's report. "A further issue of highway safety was also raised, and there was lengthy discussions at the hearing. Given the speed and frequency of traffic that I noted there, I share the concerns in relation to this issue." Those are the words of the inspector, which seem to be totally ignored by officers in the consultation document. These are both safety issues, and whilst doubtless officers would say only planning issues can be considered, everything else is irrelevant, it will be members that will be blamed when a disaster strikes due to bad policy decisions. Safety of our residents should be our first concerns, not reckless proposals to build anywhere at any cost. Thank you.
Councillor Knowles, thank you. And Councillor Hyman.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Leader, and officers, members. There's far too many pages for me to start on, picking into little bits, so I'd just like to work on a higher level. I think most people are aware that it's been announced that there are three legal challenges to the Local Plan Part One on very different grounds, and one of those is on respecting the environmental constraints of the borough. Can the executive say yet, I mean, at this point, whether we will be defending the plan against all three of those judicial reviews, and to what extent they may affect decision-making at planning committees in the meantime, until these are resolved? Thank you very much, Leader.
Councillor Hyman, thank you. I will be making a statement at the end of this item on the judicial reviews. Executive, Councillor Storey, would you like to come back and perhaps assist with Councillor Knowles' points?
Certainly, Leader. First of all, can I say how pleased I was that the Secretary of State supported our local plan in the decision-making on the appeals which he had held back, and indeed on the decision on Dunstfold Park. Going forwards with the Local Plan Part Two, I realise that you're going to say something about the legal challenges, but can I just reassure Councillor Hyman that the legal challenges have no effect on our decision-making processes in relation to planning applications, nor indeed do they affect our moving forward with Part Two. Councillor Knowles has brought forward two sites in the plan which are in Hazelmead and has cited them as safety issues. Firstly, can I say that the site 07, DS07, has been in the public domain since August 2016, and it was published by us in the LAA, and it was brought forward by Hazelmead Town Council, or at least Councillor Michael Foster of Hazelmead Town Council, in the call for sites in 2014. The important point is that although the red line boundary for that DS07 includes the fire station, that does not mean that the fire station would necessarily be removed or redeveloped. Existing use within any of the sites is a consideration going forwards. DS14, the Petworth Road site, certainly the planning inspector has turned down an application for 20-something flats. This has been taken into account in the latest version of Local Plan Part Two on page 224 in tonight's paper. It is, of course, a consultation document, and as such, anybody from Councillor Knowles or any member of the public can come forward and say they disagree with that as a site, that 15 is too many, or any other consideration. And the same, of course, goes for DS07, or the many members of the public in Chillingfold who have come forward and said that Site Five in Chillingfold has been a green area for, since time began, and that they wouldn't like to see it being used. Please take part in the consultation. Now, in relation to the consultation timescale, we were intending to start that on April the 23rd. However, as you are aware, there is a by-election being called in the Castle Ward in Farnham, which is to take place on May the 24th. As a result of that, this council is required to go into what's called a state of perda, which means that we cannot start the consultation until after that election, which means May the 25th. In other words, a one-month delay in the start of the consultation period. I'm very sorry that that has to happen, but it is part of our duty as a council. I have one recommendation, which you will find in the agenda, but I understand, Leader, that you wish to make some comments in regard to the legal challenges and that there may be a further recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Storey. Executive, any other comments on this item? Mrs King.
Thank you very much, Leader. I appreciate Councillor Storey's advice on the new start date for the consultation. But one of the questions that arose from the two residents who raised the Petworth Road issue with me was how we were actually going to publish the consultation, how they would find it and where it would be. It would be appreciated if we could let them know. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, and then we'll come back with some answers.
I was going to ask the same question as Councillor King, actually.
Right, okay. So, Councillor Storey?
Thank you, Leader. The consultation will be using our online consultation system, but we will also accept email and hard copy responses. There will be events in the four main settlements and the parishes, particularly where LPP2 is proposing housing allocations, and separate events will be held for parish and town councils and also for the traveller community.
Right, so I think that's pretty comprehensive, but clearly if any members have any other thoughts on communication and would like to let us know on that, I'm sure we can work with the officers. So hopefully, as I say, I think that's covered virtually all bases, as it were. Right, any other comments on this item? There is going to be an additional recommendation, and that's because I'm asking the executive to agree that we, the sum of £200,000, £100,000 now, and a further £100,000 to be approved by full council. And as we know, we now have to defend our decision to adopt a sound local plan to protect our residents and our communities. An excellent plan that protects Waverley from inappropriate ad hoc development, a plan that has been improved by an independent inspector, a plan that has been through three years of consultation and public and councillor scrutiny, and a plan that is a government requirement. And I am tired of this council and our residents being bullied and having to defend the lawful democratic decisions of this council in the High Court. In the last two years, Waverley has had to face a number of very costly challenges on lawful decisions that have benefited our community. We've had to defend our decisions on Undershore, which we won, that is now an independent school for children with special needs, and referred to by Ofsted as "a school that aims to change lives for the better and strive to ensure that every child can realise their potential and make their unique contribution to society". Brightwells, which we won, a regeneration scheme that will bring homes, jobs and a new retail and leisure offer to a rundown, underutilised area of Farnham. The Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, which we won, a plan that was led by the community following years of hard work, was voted for by the community at a referendum. Our decision to hold the referendum was challenged, our decision to adopt the plan was challenged, and the challenges failed. Dunstfold, so Dunstfold eventually squashed by the Secretary of State, but after Waverley and the developer had to spend hundreds of thousands of pounds defending the planning decision and being threatened with a JR, which was then withdrawn before it reached the courts. This administration is really proud of our local plan. It has been found to be sound, we've adopted it, and it has already fended off significant unwanted and inappropriate development in this borough. Just last week, the Secretary of State published his long-awaited decisions on four key planning applications, all backing Waverley's local plan. Quite frankly, I am appalled that when we have to spend this sort of money on legal expenses, when we compare it to what we could be spending on services, £200,000 at a time when, as a council, we face enormous financial challenges and we are doing our utmost to deliver and protect key frontline services for our residents and many of our most vulnerable members of the community, this is appalling. The adopted local plan is Waverley's lawfully adopted framework for development and planning decisions. The plan will continue to be our guide for all future development in the borough despite these challenges, and will be our guide for the life of the plan, as I am confident that we will successfully defend the plan against all three challenges. This council will instruct the courts that we will pursue full reimbursement of all legal costs we incur, and we will not accept anything less. These campaigning pressure groups must understand that this irresponsible abuse of public money will not be tolerated by Waverley Borough Council or its residents. Colleagues, I think I've made my feelings and the feelings of this administration extremely clear on this matter, and with that in mind, we do have a revised recommendation under item five, which I will read out for the sake of clarity and for the sake of the webcast, so that everyone's very clear on that. So we have recommendation one, and we then have the additional recommendation, which is that the executive proposes an amount of £200,000 for external legal costs to defend the council's position on the judicial review challenges to Waverley Borough Council's adoption of Local Plan Part One, to be met from the Revenue Reserve Fund, and therefore the executive, one, approves a supplementary estimate of £100,000, and, two, recommends to the council that a further supplementary estimate of £100,000 be approved. I propose this, and I believe I have a seconder.
Please, a second.
Thank you, Councillor Hall. Executive, can I ask for your agreement to that recommendation, please?
Agreed.
Thank you. Executive, now that that has been agreed, are all three recommendations agreed, including the initial one on page three of your agenda?
Agreed.
Thank you. Right, if we move to item six, which is the Community Infrastructure Levy and approval to submit the draft charging schedule for examination, which again is Councillor Storey. Before we go to Councillor Storey, I have Councillor Hyman down for speaking. Councillor Hyman?
Yes, thank you, Chair, Leader. Just a couple of concerns in respect of this, and that is, as I've expressed many, many times before, because this has been passed the overview and scrutiny committees a number of times and in front of many of us, more than enough times out of thought, but there's still problems in relation to the treatment of the, the way that the CIL draft charging schedule approaches SANGs, which, as far as I'm concerned, is contrary to the delivery framework and Waverley's own avoidance strategy. And that's in respect of affordable housing, which doesn't pay into the CIL, but is required to pay SANGs, for SANGs according to our delivery framework and avoidance strategy. So that's a contradiction there, which I think would need to be sorted out, and I don't know how exactly other councils have sorted that. So that's, what I'm saying is, the SANG, there is a tariff in there, a SANG tariff in the CIL draft charging schedule, which affordable housing should pay in for, pay into, and it doesn't. The other is the treatment of development within the visitor catchment area of the Wildon Heaths. Those applications, by contrast with developments around Farnham, those developments around the Wildon Heaths effectively pay twice because there's no reduction in the charging, there is a lower rate for Farnham, a lower CIL rate for Farnham, and they would effectively pay twice because they would, some of them have to pay for SANGs, yet they're also paying a higher rate, and this will skew development. In fact, what it would do is attract developments to Farnham rather than to areas around the Heaths, of course, I suppose. But you might call that dual standards for the Hazelmead and Milford areas, particularly in Gollumming. Apart from that, there is obviously an assumption that SANG and SAM are effective, which is made, and there's no evidence base for that assumption, and that Policy NRM6 does allow change to the strategy, and the Joint Strategic Partnership Board is currently, has been looking very actively at trying to find another solution. So these are problems for it, which I think should be sorted before it goes out, but I've mentioned these things before a number of times, and I just wanted it on record yet again that this ought to be looked at. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, Councillor Hyman. Councillor Storey, do you want to take this item? Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I'm not altogether sure what Councillor Hyman's point was about SANG. Perhaps I can speak to him afterwards to see if I can help clarify that.
Thank you, I think that would be very helpful.
Certainly, SANG falls within the definition of infrastructure and therefore has to be covered within SIL. We've taken this through two periods of consultation, and now we're ready for it to be examined by the Planning Inspectorate, and we hope to submit at the end of April and beginning of May for hearings, probably in June or July. Assuming that the examiner finds favourably, then we would think that we would start to be able to charge in the latter quarter of the year, and I'm sure we'll all be very pleased to see that start. The recommendations, if I can find my way back through the thousands of pages, are, on page three, there are two, and I hope that the executive will support them.
Councillor Storey, thank you. Colleagues, has anyone else got anything they wish to add to that, before I ask Mr Clark to just come in with a brief word? No? Okay. Mr Clark?
Thank you, Leader. Well, I need to say that Councillor Hyman asked some, made some detailed points there, and the officer team are very happy to pick those up if Councillor Hyman wants to drop us an email or meets, and Councillor Storey's subsequently offered the same as well. And again, as Councillor Storey said, that what the executive being asked is to recommend to council that this is submitted for an examination, and if there's anything fundamental within the detail that needs to be considered, that will be considered as part of that full examination. Thank you, Leader.
Mr Clark, thank you very much. Councillor Hyman, I hope that that is helpful. Colleagues, as Councillor Storey said, we have two recommendations on page three of your agenda under that item. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Moving to item seven, which is another for Councillor Storey, and that's the Development Management Improvement Plan, a progress update. And Councillor Hyman, you've put your name down to speak.
Only to say that, thank you, Leader, only to say that there, in respect of the improvement plans, proposals to bring forward training for members and presumably for staff as well, and that for quite some time we have been seeking training in respect of EIA and habitats related applications. I think there is an urgency for those to come forward, I can let you know why there's an urgency for that to come forward another time if you like, but there is, I would just like an assurance from you that this can be done as soon as possible, because obviously we shouldn't be making planning decisions until we really do have a proper understanding of those issues there. So if I could have an assurance that the council will be bringing forward training or briefings etc on EIA and habitats very soon, and when that's going to happen, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Councillor Hyman, thank you. Yes, I am aware that there's always already been a number of training sessions run for both councillors and staff, which have been very helpful, and I will be sure to make sure that your comments are passed to the appropriate directors so that they can include those when they're looking at the next training sessions. Councillor Storey?
Thank you, it's the councillor Storey show again. Leader, I hope that if you look at the long pages, you will be pleased at the number of green and blue boxes which indicate that we're either on schedule or in blue, we've actually completed these actions. We're progressing very well. In relation to training, the most recent training event we had was our Good, Bad and Mediocre Design Tour, which I think it was about 18 planning members took a day to visit various sites around the borough and were able to make their own minds up about what constitutes good and bad design. I'm sorry that more members didn't feel that it was a worthwhile event and didn't attend, but I certainly got something out of it. With relation to one item on the development plan here, that is relation to the IT system for the planning department, there have been some reservations about the council working with a software developer to produce a brand new system. Unfortunately, that has been forced upon us by the lack of availability of suitable systems. Many councils have been put in a position of being halfway through switching to a system when the provider of the system has not been able to deliver. And so we're working with someone we've worked with on other matters and progressing very well. The development control part, which is ahead of the, sorry, the building control, which is ahead of development control, is very near to being available and will be demonstrated in the next few weeks. And I have asked Mrs Sims to make sure that members of the audit committee who have expressed doubts about the IT system are invited to that demonstration so that they can see for themselves whether it's looking as if it's going to be viable. Thank you. I recommend the recommendations.
Thank you very much, councillor Storey. That's really helpful in terms of the IT system and the amount of work I know that's gone on with officers and councillors on this overall improvement plan is significant. So my thanks to all the officers involved for that and all the councillors. I see I have a number of executive members who want to speak. Councillor Martin first.
Thank you, Leader. If I could just echo the comments that councillor Storey's made about the IT system, that we really are in a sort of Hobson's Choice situation, that there really isn't much, there aren't really many other avenues that we can head down, but from a risk point of view, this council hasn't actually spent any money on a new system, so the risk to us is really only time and a delay rather than any financial risk, which ultimately is a considerable mitigating factor, but the team is working hard to try and bring something to fruition.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Just to comment on the fantastic trip we had on the Good, Bad and Mediocre, it was a fantastic event, very, very worthwhile, and it highlighted a number of issues actually. But it was interesting, not everybody agreed what was good or bad or mediocre, so very worthwhile, and I think we should as a council try and organise another one and encourage those members that didn't attend to attend. But congratulations to all concerned, great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Any other comments? In that case, we've got the one recommendation on the bottom of page three. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. Moving to item eight, which is the Property Investment Strategy. Councillor Band?
Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Band.
As in councillor Williamson's absence, I have been over the last six months the chairman of the Value For Money ONS Committee and a member of the working group which developed this property investment strategy. I felt it might be helpful to members of the executive if they understood the background as to how we came to what you have before you today. The original brief for the working group was to look at the issues surrounding a property investment company, but for three main reasons, we backed away from that. Firstly, was the increasing importance of the revenue from our property investment portfolio to the medium term budget strategy. Secondly, was the concerns that members, some members were clearly expressing at council when proposals came forward for investment in properties. And thirdly, was the issues coming out of the GVA consultants' presentation, where they set out pretty clearly the issues which they felt should be incorporated in any proposed property investment strategy. And so on that basis, the working group decided before looking at a property company, we should take a step back and revisit the property investment strategy per se, and that is the result of what you have before you. It wouldn't have been possible without a huge lot of help and effort from officers, and for which I personally am extremely grateful, particularly to Anne Keynes, who honestly must have the patience of a saint at times to deal with some of the queries and modifications asked by some of the members of the working group. So I think the council is a huge thank to Anne for her perseverance in helping develop this strategy. It's unashamedly slightly more restrictive than the strategy it overtakes, but it does include delegated powers to the executive. However, even if this is slightly more restrictive, it does not preclude the executive taking proposals directly to council, where they are outside the scope of this particular strategy. I don't think anybody would claim it's perfect, and it will need updating in the light of experience, and I'm pleased to see one of the recommendations provides exactly for that. So Leader, I commend this proposed investment strategy for your consideration. Thank you.
Councillor Band, thank you. I know an awful lot of work went into this, as you say, by a number of the officers, especially Anne Keynes, and my thanks also to the task group, the Value For Money Task Group, who worked on this. And as I say, I think it's really good that we have a framework now that members generally feel a lot more comfortable with and something to work with. We ongoing have property investment as a significant area of our business, we need to make sure that that really does work for us, and so I think we'd all agree that this is absolutely crucial, and thank you very much for taking the time to do that introduction. Before I move to councillor Hall, who's the portfolio holder, councillor Hyman, you're also down to speak on this item?
Thank you again, Leader. Yes, what is being asked here, and I think in overview, is that the council is being asked to delegate to the executive the ability to spend up to £20 million at a time investing in commercial property. Because that's a maximum of two £10 million investments which can be, which might be tied together, so that's £20 million at one time, could be delegated to the exec. But at a maximum of £30 million over three years, correct me if I'm wrong, please on that, that's what I vaguely recall from the meeting a few weeks ago. And that's a lot of money, a lot of public funds, and obviously of interest to two members of the public and residents. I think the other issue, the main issue here is that we had a briefing some month ago, I guess it was, perhaps two months ago, in respect of a property investment company, and we certainly got the impression that what we were being told was saying we wouldn't need a property investment company and wouldn't go down that line, and some others aren't. But then I was a little bit surprised to find that we were still going down that line, and the justification, I think, for it, I did sort of understand, but our reports, I'm a little bit surprised, our reports don't state the legislation which applies and the justification for our own interpretation. And I think, you know, we should have that in all the reports, it would be very useful for members to be able to read the short sections of law that happen to apply, that our policy is being based upon. I'm very pleased here to see the changes that have been made, anyway, to the investment strategy, very welcome. I can't, as a matter of principle, say that we shouldn't be doing anything like this because we have invested and owned commercial property as a council over many, many years. It's not as though we're stepping that far away, it's a matter of whether we're doing the right thing in buying now to some extent, I suppose. And it is, you have, I see, allowed for more non-executive members to be on the board, which I think is certainly safer, I think that's one of the key things here, which we thought was good at ONS. It is, of course, more difficult for members of the majority party to scrutinise its own party's policy, direction and actions. So I just wondered if you could answer please for me. Does the executive intend to include or exclude opposition group members or a member on the board? Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Mr Bainbridge, I noticed you wanted to come in, and then Mr Clark.
I just wanted to reassure the executive that there is a bit more detail about the legal basis of funding considerations, actually in the strategy itself as opposed to the covering report, but of course that advice on using company or not using company when we're obliged to do that and when we're not, it's all been before council, the executive and council in the past.
Thank you, Mr Bainbridge. Mr Clark?
Leader, just to sort of build on that point, so I think councillor Hyman mentioned the legal, specific legal advice around setting up a company, and last July, when the council agreed for Waverley to set one up, there was a very comprehensive legal analysis at that point. This report isn't asking anything around the company, it recognises that option stays available to us if there are certain circumstances where that would give us advantage, but the actual establishment of the company is on hold, as councillor Band said, whilst the group now decide whether they want to continue to explore the company option on the back of this strategy, but that legal advice was in full in front of committee last year. And Leader, if I could just add as well around the actual recommendation two A, what this is saying is, if the council agree this strategy and the criteria for making property investments, then the executive, have only got a delegation if the proposal is within these limits and it satisfies all of that criteria. So the council is setting the boundaries within which the executive can operate, and if there is a proposal that doesn't meet one or a number of the criteria, then that would need to have a solid business case and come through to full council.
Thank you very much for clarifying. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Leader. Excuse me. I mean, this item covers the property investment strategy for the estates and the overall operating model for the Investment Advisory Board. The main elements of the strategy are the funding, the prudential borrowing approach, and the report goes on to set out net return criteria and diversification targets for Waverley's property portfolio. Crucially, the strategy formalises the due diligence process, the performance reporting, and sets a pretty robust framework for the long-term governance of the Investment Advisory Board and future investment acquisitions which come before it. There can be no doubt that the acquisitions made to date have yielded fruit, but this report sets out the parameters for the future acquisitions, ensuring that a proper balance is achieved between risk and reward and that a solid process is observed throughout the acquisition process. To answer councillor Hyman's question directly, I mean, the make-up of the board doesn't specify whether it's opposition members or majority members, it's completely open depending on who is appointed. I also would like to thank the members of the Value For Money ONS Committee, the working group, and the officers in the estates team who put in hours of work to bring this together. And this is a real building block as we step forward, bringing the AIB forward, that we formulate how we operate, and then in, you know, time to come, we can amend it and review it as we see fit. I would urge you all to support this, and I think it's an excellent, excellent report.
Councillor Hall, thank you. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. I actually attended the ONS where this matter was discussed at great length, and I would congratulate the ONS on their findings and their views and their recommendations, which the executive fully endorse, and good work by the ONS and a good plan for the future. I thoroughly recommend this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? In that case, we've got three recommendations under that item. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item nine, which is the Treasury Management Framework, we have again one speaker, councillor Hyman.
I think perhaps I should challenge councillor Storey's assertion that it's the councillor Storey show. Leader, under the Treasury Management strategy here, we, something came up at the audit and the VFM meetings on this, 27th of March, there was an audit committee meeting, and we were advised by officers of a couple of changes to the SIP for Code of Local Authority Accounting, to IRFS, financial instruments, and also to revenue from customer contracts. When officers advised that Waverley would not be affected, as it does not invest in derivatives or other risky financial instruments, I queried that because I thought that I'd remembered seeing it in this Treasury Management strategy, which we had agreed at the VFM overview and scrutiny the previous evening. And we did get an absolute assurance at that audit meeting, from a finance officer, that there was no question of Waverley using derivatives. This is absolutely no criticism whatsoever of officers here, just a matter of knowing what's in the papers. But we were given an absolute assurance that But we were given an absolute assurance that there was no question it was using derivatives. Now, we all thought I must have dreamt it up, I think, there, but I checked the papers. And if you'd like to turn, please, to page 327 of your papers. I do thank Fiona for providing me with a full set of these documents, I didn't realise what task I'd given her, and it was mainly so that I could look at this one single bit in the middle of it, on page 327. So, you see, it states, under TMP4 approved instruments, methods and techniques, the second paragraph says, should Waverley decide in future to use derivative instruments for the management of risks, these will be limited to those set out in its annual treasury management strategy. The organisation will seek proper advice and will consider that advice when entering into agreements to use such projects, to ensure that it fully understands those projects. So, I knew I had seen it in there somewhere. Now, whilst that practice statement does make it perfectly clear that there's no intention to use derivatives this year, and it is not in our strategy, we're not using it at the moment, we're not going to use them in this coming year, what it does is very much present their future use in the context of the words 'will' and 'when', which we see in there, rather than 'if', as though it is simply a matter of time. And the text certainly does not reflect the assured position of officers given to members at the audit committee meeting. I mean, I fully understand not all derivatives are necessarily that risky, and, you know, but we were given that assurance, we're not going to be investing in derivatives. And I think that the idea that Waverley's getting residents used to the concept of investing public funds in derivatives might be a little bit alarming to some of them. And I'd like your assurance here, that, I think perhaps what I should ask is, that paragraph, that second paragraph of TMP4, perhaps be removed or something added there, in order to avoid the possibility of misinterpretation, because it does appear to be lining us up with some wills and whens, not ifs. And, you know, this is what's coming in the future, and I don't know that that is what this council wants to tell our residents. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Hyman, thank you. Councillor Hall, would you like to take councillor Hyman's question?
Certainly. I mean, I'm happy to give an assurance, councillor Hyman, that derivatives are currently not used or authorised for use within treasury, and there are currently no plans to amend the strategy to include derivatives, whether they're interest rates, caps, collars, floors, swaptions, or any combination of those kind of instruments. If you read the paragraph carefully, it said, should Waverley decide in the future to use derivative instruments, it can only be those set out in the management strategy. If they're not in the strategy, then it can't use them. The current strategy doesn't have any in, so therefore it can't use them. But I'm happy to give you that assurance, that there are no plans currently to use any sort of interest rate, equity, commodity-based futures of any strikes or maturities.
Thank you. Colleagues, does anyone else wish to comment on this item? Right, okay. So, under item nine, we have one recommendation. Councillor Hall, you wanted to just add a few comments?
Thank you, Leader. The item itself covers the treasury management framework, which is essentially our money market operations for cash management within the council. The actual changes, there are only very tiny changes to the existing framework, and not really, not really that material. However, we are required to re-approve the framework annually, therefore, I'd ask you all to support the item.
Councillor Hall, thank you. We have, as I say, one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. Moving to item 10, we have no speakers on item 10. Item 10 is service plans relating to all portfolios and the service plan objectives and actions for the forthcoming financial year. And, as you're all aware, these are produced to enable us to really ensure that we deliver against the council's corporate objectives and form an important element of the overall performance management framework for the council. Colleagues, any comments? Anything you'd like to raise within your own portfolio service plans? In that case, we've got three recommendations under that item, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 11, which is the housing strategy, strategic housing and delivery. Councillor, Mrs King?
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. You've all got a copy of this weighty tome, I'm afraid. It's been several years since we last published a housing strategy, and it's really important we set out our aims and objectives in providing homes for all our residents that are affordable, secure and sustainable, whatever the level of income. When you consider the average house price in Waverley is now over half a million, finding a suitable, affordable house is really vital for most people. We're working very hard with our housing association partners and our own development team on an exciting programme of affordable house building over the next five years, and we're also looking at our programme for the next 10 years. We're waiting for significant government policy announcements on the revision for the NPPF and social housing in general, so I don't, we don't know what that's going to bring. But this policy is divided into four sections, plus a glossary of housing terms which people might find useful. Colleagues might find the need in affordability analysis on page 451 quite interesting reading. The housing ONS, who've done a great job at scrutinising this, and I thank them very much for the work they've done, will be doing a thorough review of the strategy every year, and I will be bringing a progress report back to council to show how we have delivered against our targets and how we have recalibrated the strategy in the light of government policy. And at this stage, I would actually like to very much thank Andrew Smith and his team, who've done a tremendous amount of work on producing this. I hope we've now got a good document for the future. I commend the report to you.
Councillor King, thank you very much. Colleagues, anyone else wish to speak on this item? Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, I too would like to echo councillor King's congratulations for the housing department. In detail, it's lovely to see houses being built at Oxford Ridge, and they will be very soon available for occupation. Thank you.
Any other members? As I say, I think we all echo councillor King's thanks to Mr Smith and his officer team, who've put a huge amount of work into this. And also, as I say, to the Housing Overview and Scrutiny Committee, who, again, have put a lot of work and really constructive feedback into reviewing this report and this really excellent piece of work. Colleagues, there is one recommendation under this item, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 12, councillor King, again, this is the homelessness strategy for 2018 to 2023.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. As colleagues will recall, our track record on preventing homelessness in Waverley is exceptional, and the new strategy here builds on our success. We're required by government to produce a strategy for preventing homelessness every five years, and I should point out that although there is a large amount of material here, we are statutorily required to present this. The Homelessness Reduction Act came into force on the 1st of April, and the housing options team has spent the last year preparing for the likely impact of that on Waverley, ensuring that we can meet the challenges ahead and maintain our truly excellent record of preventing homelessness. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor King, thank you. Colleagues, anyone else wish to comment on that? No? In that case, there is one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 13, which is the performance management report for quarter three 2017/18, so that's October to December 2017. The report sets out the council's performance for this third quarter across most of the key service areas, and I'm very pleased to report that the performance overall was very good. Particularly good performance from both areas of the housing team, in housing on both responsive repairs and homelessness and the number of days taken to re-let void properties. So, Mrs King, I'd be grateful if you could pass on our thanks to the respective housing teams, who I know have worked very hard on and very focused on those areas that had been identified. Further improvements have taken place, and we've seen a vast improvement in the benefit service, and that follows the successful Business Transformation Project. There've been really good performances coming through with planning applications, in terms of their being processed well within target times. And although the third quarter saw the number of planning appeals allowed continuing to be above the 30% target, I think we're all confident that with the adoption of the local plan now in place, we will really start to now see that changing. And obviously, we've already seen that with a number of successful appeals being defended literally within the last two to three weeks. So, that really is absolutely superb news. There were no changes to the targets or indicators recommended by the overview and scrutiny committees for the third quarter. And, once again, I'd just like to emphasise my thanks to the scrutiny committees for their work and their feedback on these items. Colleagues, there is one recommendation under that item, would anyone like to make any comments and additional comments? Councillor, Mrs King?
Thank you, Leader. Really to say thank you very much on behalf of the housing team for your continuing support. And I have to say how nice it is at long last to see figures for housing nearly all in the green. The amber against the percentage of the estimated annual rent debit collection is still due to the fact that we have been collecting rents in advance, and in fact, of course, to the credit to rent accounts of the water rates money. So, but I'm confident that that will be green before very much longer, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, councillor King. Anyone else? No? In that case, we've got one recommendation, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to councillor Hall again, a property issue, Godalming Cricket Club.
Thank you, Leader. There's a small amendment to the recommendation, as it appears on your papers, which said, it is recommended that a lease of two cricket squares, the cricket nets and a garage be granted to Godalming Cricket Club. The words 'and a garage' should be deleted, so that's, that needs to come out. But this item is to grant Godalming Cricket Club a 30-year lease on the pitches, so they can access grant funding to, for improvements. Waverley is a strong supporter of sports and leisure facilities in the borough, and is very grateful to all those volunteers who give up their time to ensure people, young and old, have access to first-rate sports clubs, run by the community, for the community. I'd urge you all to support the item, and we wish Godalming the very best in the up-and-coming cricket season.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. If I could just make two points. Firstly, if I can make a very late declaration of non-perpetual interest, that although not directly connected with the cricket club, I am a director of the Holloway Hill Sports Association, which operates the recreation ground or the pavilion thereby, but I am also the ward councillor for that area, and I thoroughly support this proposal, because the Godalming Cricket Club are really very successful and are great users of that recreation ground, more so than, dare I say, perhaps any other sport. So, wholeheartedly in favour of this, thank you.
Colleagues, we'll move to the recommendation, if you're agreed, yes? Right. No? Sorry, can I ask you, before we agree, we need to actually second, we've changed the recommendation. So, can I just come, move back? The recommendation is now being changed by councillor Hall, and councillor Hall, you wish to propose the revised recommendation, do you have a second, though? I'm pleased to second. So, just for the sake of clarity, we read the revised application. It is recommended that a lease of two cricket squares and the cricket nets at Holloway Hill Recreation Ground be granted to Godalming Cricket Club for a period of 30 years, on terms and conditions as set out in the exempt annex, and with other terms and conditions to be agreed by the estates and valuations manager. Colleagues, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And we managed to do it without having to go into exempt as well. Right. If we move to the next item, again, another councillor Hall item, the outstanding debt write-offs for decision under item 15. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Leader. This item is to approve debt write-offs, the total amount is roughly £250,000. Now, the main portion of this write-off, £225,000, is due to insolvency of companies, roughly 10 companies, and £15,000 is due to the personal insolvency of an individual. As always, Waverley makes every effort to recover its debts, but sometimes circumstances are such that outstanding amounts cannot be pursued or recovered. Therefore, I ask for your support to approve the item.
Colleagues, are we agreed on that recommendation? There's one recommendation under item 15?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We have no items this evening to hear in exempt, and so there is no need for us to exclude the press or the public. Colleagues, thank you very much for your time, officers likewise, thank you very much for your time this evening, and safe journeys home. I now declare the meeting closed.